Good morning. We're going to get started this morning with an invocation led by Rabbi Varit Harris of Temple Benai Israel, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Claire Goodpasture representing Scouting America Troop 6226. Please stand as you are able.
Ruth Brin wrote, "When men were children, they thought of God as a father. When men were slaves, they thought of God as a master. When men were subjects, they thought of God as a king. But I am a woman, not a slave, not a subject, not a child who longs for God as father or mother. I might imagine God as teacher or friend, but those images like king, master, father, or mother are too small for me now. God is the force of motion and light in the universe. God is the strength of life on our planet. God is the power moving us to do good. God is the source of love springing up in us. God is far beyond what we can comprehend. With this in mind, I offer a prayer from a Jewish person forced 500 years ago to choose whether they would be murdered, whether they would be forced to leave their home country, or whether they would convert to Christianity under duress. God on high, divine sovereign, enlighten my soul at all times. Give me, oh God, true faith and perfect humility against the world's vanities. Do not give me riches, oh God, that may make me proud, nor poverty that may abase me. Give me, oh God, some help that I may serve you and life that I may praise you. In your work today and mine, may we serve a source of light and love, a force for good, a higher purpose. May our work itself be a form of praise for that which is beyond what we can comprehend. May we understand that tomorrow's better world relies on today's better decisions. Amen."
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, Rabbi Harris, and thank you, Claire. All right, I call this meeting of the City Council to order, and we will start, of course, with Item Three, Office of the Mayor. We have Item Three A, which is the appointment of our Youth Council for the academic year of 2025, 2026. And I forget exactly how we've done this every year, but I think what we'll do is we'll go around the horseshoe, words one through eight, and then I will finish. And then Debbie, do you think, do you want them all to come up now or come up as they're announced? All right, everybody come on up, get behind your council member, and then we'll go around and we'll learn a little bit more about you. And we certainly welcome you all, and we welcome your families here to City Hall this morning. So once everybody's kind of settled, Councilman Carter, we'll start with you. We'll go all the way through eight, and then I'll do the at-large. And did you have something you wanted to say? Debbie Martin, of course, the chief of staff to the council who puts so much work into this program every year. Debbie?
Well, I'm pleased to present these young people this year for the new class of the Youth Council, and I would also like to reintroduce Kim Garrett-Funk and Spencer Brown as our program co-chairs for this year. They make this happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, yeah.
Councilman Carter?
Thank you. So I have the honor and the pleasure of introducing Sarah Reyes and Ethan Lamb. But before I do, though, would Zaida and Brandon stand up, please? Mom, Dad, thank you guys so much. You raise amazing children, and the fact that they even want to serve the city of Oklahoma City, we just want to give you a round of applause as well and say thank you very much. So I will start to my right with Sarah. Sarah is a senior at Putnam City High School. She plays the first violin in the school's symphony orchestra and helps lead multicultural leadership efforts, organizing heritage celebrations and fundraisers. Outside of school, she runs her own beauty business, Glam Dubai Sarita, offering nail, lash, and brow services while managing appointments, marketing, and client care. A superior-rated soloist and AP World History Honoree, Sarah is also passionate about social connection and service. She says her business has helped her overcome shyness after immigrating to the U.S., and she sees a need for better mental health support and housing stability for Oklahoma City youth. I asked her earlier, what is one thing her bio doesn't tell me? And she said that she loves to challenge herself and learn new things, mainly trying to get herself out of her comfort zone. So, thank you very much, Sarah. Okay, Ethan. Ethan is a senior at Piedmont High School. He has served on the Board of Teen Volunteers at OU Medical Center, where he has contributed over 500 hours of service. He is a member of the state champion cross-country team and all-state honor band. As a student leader, Ethan has organized a 5K fundraiser through Student Council, and he's raised over $3,000 for his community. He also guides a visually impaired runner three times a week. Ethan sees declining education standards and the loss of face-to-face social interaction as significant issues facing young people today. I also asked Ethan, what is one thing his bio doesn't tell me? And he says that he just loves to give back, and he thinks it's important to pour into other people before himself. I say this each and every year after reading these bios, and I'm going to continue, because it amazes me, in everything that we get to see in the news, everything that we hear a lot of times, that we often negate how awesome our youth can be. And I am challenged, even at what these two have done in their lives up to this point, and what I'm doing with mine. So I want to say thank you to these two and introduce Sarah and Ethan to you. Thank you very much.
Councilman Cooper?
Thanks, Mayor.
That's an honor. Thanks, Mayor. Callie Pacias, do I do it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. This is me every semester at the start of teaching. It's 20 new batches of students times four, and I'm just going to mess it up. So I'm glad I didn't. I'm going to start with Callie, who is a senior at Aztec Charter School. She has served as a YMCA summer camp counselor and works currently in Childwatch, supporting early childhood development and building relationships with families. Callie has coached elementary volleyball, oh my gosh, helping young athletes develop skills and confidence, and previously studied piano for six years, performing advanced piano pieces at public recitals. She sees rising homelessness and the discrimination faced by Hispanic students as major issues, so do I, impacting young people and believes in advocacy and equity for all. Bless you. That's wonderful. Excited. De Leon, did I get it? Okay, Matthew De Leon. Matthew is a junior at Bishop McGinnis High School, where he has served as Student Council Senator, helping lead community service initiatives like food drives for the regional food bank. He is a competitive member of his school's speech and debate team. Ah, it's going to be fun. Earning second place in regionals and placing in the top 20 at the state level. Matthew also plays on the varsity soccer team, where he has developed resilience, teamwork, and leadership. He believes the rise of peer pressure and cyberbullying through social media are major issues facing young people, and advocates for mental health resources, good for you, and protective policies to create safer online environments. Welcome to Ward Two. I'm just going to give these to them. I think is that what I'm supposed to do? All right, they're yours. Thank you.
Councilwoman Evers?
All right, I'm just going to follow sample and ask the parents of Jaden Mousay and Edward Nguyen. Stand up, please. Thank you, guys, for raising your children and encouraging them for public service and giving them this opportunity, and I can't wait to work with them and learn a little bit from them and then learn from your families as well. So thank you, guys, for being here. All right, so Jaden Mousay. Got it, sister? Jaden is a senior at Mustang High School. She is a dedicated member of the Mustang Girls Golf Team, where she serves as social media and social events coordinator and represents her sport on the Bronco Athletic Council. Jaden is also active in Reach, a student-led service organization, and coaches youth through First T, a national golf and leadership development program that our very own Debbie Martin is so instrumental in. Her accomplishments include the Horsepower Award, selection for the John Deere Leadership Academy in San Francisco, and participation in the PGA Leadership Academy in Atlanta. Jaden is passionate about addressing substance abuse and harmful social media influences among youth in Oklahoma City, advocating for preventative education, positive peer mentorship, and stronger mental health support. I've already told Jaden we're going to be putting her to work. All right, Edward Nguyen. Edward is from our South Lakes District. Edward Nguyen is a senior at Oklahoma School of Science and Mathematics. He co-founded a private VEX robotics team, earning multiple state champions and national placements while developing skills in C++ programming and CAD. He also volunteers at the OU Oncology Lab, researching RNA regulation and gaining hands-on lab experience. Edward is passionate about mentorship, offering ACT tutoring, and advocating for youth access to research and healthcare career pathways. He believes Oklahoma City youth need more mental health support and equitable access to STEM opportunities, and he champions peer-driven innovation and education equity. I am so excited to be working with both of these students, and I'm welcoming them to help me represent Ward Three as our Youth Council.
Councilman Stone?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'll do likewise and start with the parents first. If we could get Kristin Starr, Daryl Ross, and Jessica Menes to stand up. Thank you all so much for working with these kids and developing them. That's just amazing. I know it's a ton of work, but thank you very much. All right, we're going to start with Sineah Holmes. Sineah Holmes is a junior at Dove Science Academy. She currently serves as Secretary of the National Honor Society, Vice President of the Black Student Union, and has been captain of the girls' basketball team, all while maintaining employment at Kid City Indoor Playground. Her leadership is developed by her personal strength. Sineah courageously navigated the legal system to advocate for herself when faced with the challenge of securing her own safety and well-being. She believes deeply in expanding mental health support and educational access for Oklahoma City youth. Congratulations and thank you, Sineah. Appreciate you very much. All right, next we have Camden Ross. Camden Ross is a senior at Dell City High School. He's a graduate of the Dellquist Leadership Program and has been a dedicated member of the track team since 2022. Camden has made the honor roll every year since elementary school, is a National Merit Scholar, and currently holds a 4.0 GPA at Rose State College. Through Dellquist, he explored ways to serve his community and build leadership skills. While track has taught him teamwork, discipline, and resilience, Camden sees the lack of access to the mental health resources and limited career opportunities for youth, especially those from lower-income backgrounds, as significant issues facing young people in Oklahoma City. So, thank you, Camden, and congratulations. Appreciate you.
Councilman Hinkle?
Excuse me, I'm going to do the same. If the parents of Serena and Reese or the family representatives wave your hands and let us know you're here. And also want to I want to point out Spencer and Kim again. You guys do an amazing job with this every year, and Debbie, too, but this is the highlight of me on the council is getting to interact with these kids and find out what's going on in the world. So Serena and Reese, let me tell you about Serena. She's a junior at Westmore High School. She serves as Secretary of the Key Club, where she helps organize service projects and community outreach. She's also a performer and an event planner with Gawad Kalinga USA Next Gen, and that's a Filipino organization that raises funds for impoverished communities throughout cultural presentations. Since 2018, she's volunteered with the St. James, the Greater Catholic Church, supporting church activities and events. She's received academic honors, including the Certificate of Academic Excellence and several competition awards. She sees social media misuse and racial discrimination as two major challenges facing young people in Oklahoma City today. Reese is a senior at Tuttle High School and an active member of the National Honor Society. He's also served in Student Council and volunteered with the YMCA Youth Sports Program. He balances academics and community involvement with part-time work at both the YMCA and Three Strands Vintage Mall. He's been recognized on the Superintendent's Honor Roll for Academic Excellence. After overcoming a serious health challenge, Timothy developed a deep sense of resilience and empathy, and he sees excessive screen time and team vaping as key issues facing the youth today. Please welcome the Ward Five representatives.
Councilwoman Hammond?
Thank you. I'm excited to welcome Claire Galloway and James Cortez Rodriguez to the Youth Council today, and we have Samantha, Claire's mother. Where'd she go? There she is, to say hello. I'll start with Claire. Claire Galloway is a senior at Mount St. Mary Catholic High School. She serves as Vice President of the Student Council and is a dedicated member of both the speech and debate team and the varsity pom squad. Claire has earned top honors, including first place in policy debate at both the Baylor Debate Workshop and the OSSAA 4A Regionals. Known for her ambition and leadership, she takes initiative in school-wide projects and competitive events. Claire is passionate about addressing education inequality and youth homelessness in Oklahoma City. James Cortez Rodriguez is a senior at Cristo Rey Catholic High School. He is the captain of the rowing team and serves as treasurer of the drama club. James is also a dedicated dancer, earning recognition in traditional Mexican dance competitions. He has been recognized with the Executive Director, Excellence Award, and multiple President's Honor Roll distinctions. Through his work-study roles at Bridges Health OKC and Accenture, James has developed strong organizational and professional skills. He sees the lack of access to mental health resources and youth homelessness in Oklahoma City as the two big issues in our city. Welcome, James and Claire.
Councilman Pennington?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm especially excited to be here. As you all may know, I am the first Youth Council member to be elected to the City Council here in Oklahoma City. So it's like really an honor for me to be here, because it's my life full circle 20 years later. And I'm especially, and what makes it even better is the fact that I get to introduce Jeremiah today. I know we also have Fatia Ayo Delay, who is also, who's unavailable today, but I hope we can recognize her in another council meeting. But we're excited that Jeremiah Hogan is here to serve Ward Seven. Jeremiah is a senior at Millwood High School. He serves as captain of both the football and baseball teams and is a proud member of the National Honor Society. Jeremiah was honored with the title of Mr. Millwood, a recognition of his school spirit and leadership, which, by the way, he's also number one in the class, besides being captain of the football team and baseball team. But outside of the classroom, he is on, he serves on the remerge board, and he's passionate about addressing educational inequality and expanding career access for Oklahoma City youth. So Jeremiah, welcome. So excited to have you here.
Councilman Stone-Sifer?
This is, Debbie, one of my favorite things. I love doing this. I have the honor of introducing Caitlin Long and Shogi Adu. Caitlin goes to Crossings Christian School. Shogi attends Deer Creek High School. Are your family members still here?
Yes.
If they are, would they please stand? I'm really proud. First of all, Caitlin Long is a senior at Crossings Christian Church, or School. She serves on the Leadership Board of Hope Squad, a mental health awareness club, and is the lower school editor of her school's yearbook. Caitlin is also an active member of the Student Leadership Council, the Spanish Club, and the National Honor Society. Outside of school, she is a dedicated figure skater, a cashier at Supercow Win, did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, Supercow Win, and co-owner of a freeze-dried candy business with her sister. She's passionate about improving civic awareness among Oklahoma City youth, advocating for education and access to local issue-based knowledge through digital outreach and community engagement. Let's give Caitlin a big hand. Shogi Adu is a junior at Deer Creek High School. He is an active member of the speech and debate team, where he has earned top recognition, including a second place in a national pros competition and fifth place in a local humorous duet. He is also, he also participates in the Black Student Union and volunteers with St. Anthony Volunteer Program, supporting hospital staff and patients. Outside of school, he works alongside his father in the, in the family plumbing business, gaining hands-on experience and responsibility. He is passionate about improving mental health support and expanding job opportunities for youth in Oklahoma City, advocating for increased awareness and access to career development resources. Let's give Shogi a big hand.
Hey, Mayor?
Yes?
I did not know we were going to be introducing everyone's families, and I, my mother would never forgive me. So Mayor Bell, Edgar, and Nancy, if you're here, would you mind? Yes, I, we just have to. Thank you, Your Honor.
Of course. Now, the at-large council members, Grayson Petty and Thomas Suarez, who are joined here today by their families, so we'll start there. Juan, Adriana, Allison, and anyone else who's here with Grayson and Thomas, please stand and let's recognize you. All right, well, Grayson Petty is a junior at my alma mater, Putnam City North High School. She serves as section leader for her school's advanced choir, a leadership role she earned as a sophomore in a class primarily composed of seniors. Grayson is also a two-sport athlete, competing in both varsity soccer and softball. Beyond school, she actively serves the community through From the Ashes, a grassroots organization dedicated to providing meals and clothing to individuals experiencing homelessness. Grayson received the Superintendent's Honor Roll for maintaining a GPA above 4.0 and earned the number-one academic ranking in her sophomore class. She sees mental health struggles and educational inequality as two of the most pressing issues facing youth in OKC. Let's hear it for Grayson. And finally, Thomas Suarez is a senior at Mount St. Mary Catholic High School. He has served as class president since his freshman year and is an active member of Student Council. A varsity debater specializing in policy and original oratory, he also tutors students at Cooman Learning Center. Thomas is a two-time published poet, recipient of the Sister M. Anton English Academic Achievement Award, a PSAT Hispanic scholar, and was honored by the Oklahoma House of Representatives. He sees educational disparities and rising youth overdose rates as urgent issues and is committed to civic action and meaningful change. Let's hear it for Thomas. Now, we do have one bit of business. These are actual appointments, and we do need to approve them. So let's see if we can get a motion in a second for that. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. All right, passes unanimously. Let's hear it for your Youth Council. So, everyone's welcome to hang out, but you also could leave. That's totally up to you. We're going to move on to other business now. And that is items from council. Item four, we have item A and B, which are both resolutions appointing municipal judges. And why don't we hear a report on that from the Chair of Judiciary Committee, Councilman Stonecifer?
Yeah, we have two items of business today, item four A and B. Before I get started, I do want to say this. I've been on the Judiciary Committee since 2015, and we rarely have to do this. And so we had to kind of think a bit, a little bit about it, because it'd been a long time since we had done anything like this. And the process is somewhat difficult. It takes a lot of time. I want to thank Laura McDivitt, Amy Simpson, and Debbie Martin for putting all this together. And so, oh, and I want to thank each of the committee members, Bradley, Matt, and Joe Beth. Like I said, it took a lot of time, but it was well worth it, because we got two outstanding candidates. And so the first item of the business will be the resolution appointing Gunner Briscoe, effective August 26, 25, 2025, through July 1, 2026. I'd make that motion at this time, please, Your Honor.
We have a motion in a second for item four A, Appointing Gunner Briscoe. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
And then, if you're ready, the second item of business is four B, which is through July 1, 2027.
Very good. Of course, many people will better know her as Senator K. Floyd.
Yes. But I've known her a long, long time.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes for item four B. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor.
I know that over at the courts, they recently unveiled a wall with all of the judges' pictures. And I was a little struck, and it resonates with what you said a moment ago, at how few people have been municipal judges. So there's often a lot of longevity. And thank you for the work of the Judiciary Committee for ensuring such qualified new judges join their ranks. All right, item five, City Manager Reports. We have items A and B. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So on item eight, July sales tax, so first month of the fiscal year. Just as a reminder, we projected about 1.7% growth in sales tax for this year. Sales and use tax combined make up a little over 70% of our budget, so on the general fund. So it's really very important to us. My first check of the month was slow. It's down, it's a 1% growth in sales tax, but was below the target. We've got a little bit more of our target for the year, projected for the year, in the early part of the year. And then later in the year, it's a little bit less. But between sales and use tax, we're down about $1.2 million in the first month. A lead-in for the next, for the next check on August, we've already got preliminary numbers on the August sales tax check. It is very strong growth, and a lot of that's, you know, getting the sec, the last part of the Western Conference Finals and then getting the finals that we think is having an effect. We don't have the detail, but think that would have an effect. And it's about 9% growth. So we go from 1% to 9%. Now, we don't think that's going to create a trend that will continue on, but it is good news that it will really offset the losses that we see in this month coming into next month. So I think we're in really good position right now. Again, as we've talked about before, our reserves are still strong. So this is a slow start, but next month, we'll offset that. And then we've got claims and payroll, and that's on OKC.gov. So if there's any questions, be glad to answer those. But that's all that I have.
All right, thank you. Item six, Journal of Council Proceedings. We have items A and B we could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item seven, Requests for Uncontested Continuances. Is there anything, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, starting on page 16. All of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item 11E1. Item B, 2200 Harden Drive. The owner is, owner is removed. Item D, 12728 Nelson Avenue. The owner is secured. Item E, 3812 Walker Avenue. The owner is secured. Item F, 3814 South Walker Avenue. The owner is secured. Item G is 424 Northeast 16th Street. The owner is secured. Item H, 709 Northwest 24th Street. The owner is secured. Item I, 3029 Southwest 24th Street. The owner has secured. Item N, 4428 Southeast 44th Street. The owner has secured. And item P, 309 Northwest 90th Street. The owner has secured. Continuing on page 16, item 11F1 Abandoned Buildings. These are all stricken for the same reasons in the previous list. Item B, 12728 Nelson Avenue. Item C, 424 Northeast 16th Street. Item D, 709 Northwest 24th Street. Item G, 4428 Southeast 44th Street. And item I, 309 Northwest 90th Street. The owner has secured. And that's all the items that I have.
All right. Thank you. And without objection, that'll be the order. All right, item eight, Revocable Permits and Events. We have A through E, which are all related to River Sport. And we have Tricia Downey here. And Tricia, maybe feel free to just maybe just go through all of them, and then we'll just take a series of votes, if that's okay. However you want to do it.
It's a plan. Nope, we're gonna, we're gonna go in order of the agenda. The first one is our fireworks permit. It allows us to do 10 fireworks a year, as opposed to requesting them one by one, and saving us all a little bit of time. We go through ARC's, ARC Pyrotechnics, and the first thing on their page says, safety is our number-one priority. Not only do they do amazing fireworks, but they shoot them off to the music of our choice. If you ever saw fireworks at River Sport, they're pretty fantastic. Our next fireworks display will be at the Oklahoma Regatta Festival, the first weekend in October, and also the Holiday River Parade on the 15th of November. The next item on the agenda is the Holiday River Parade. The revocable permit allows us exclusive use of the river for this parade. We have skiing elves as a warm-up act. And honestly, it's kind of hokey sounding, but they are amazing. They do amazing tricks and things that shoot out of the water, and wow. We also do a parade of boats that light up. Last year, our Ladies Dragon Boat won for moving lit-up oars as they passed through the water. It's such a beautiful sight to see. And we follow up with fireworks and maybe some laser show at that event. Fun for all, we get over 10,000 people at that event. So if you want a VIP spot, call me up. Our third event is the Oklahoma Regatta Festival, which is October 3rd through 5th. The third is Friday Night Corporate Rowing and Dragon Boat Racing. Again, Oklahoma has the only 500-meter-length course that is actually stadium-lit up. So it's a bucket list item for all rowers, but our locals seem to really enjoy that part of things. On Saturday and Sunday, we do collegiate masters in junior rowing. And when I say collegiate, we have SEC and Big Ten teams here battling it out. We have a DJ and loud music, and it is a really, really fun evening. And food trucks are all around. Again, we wrap up that event with fireworks. All of our events are actually free to visit. We don't charge a ticket. If you want to, you know, compete, well, we'll charge a little bit, but come watch, and we would enjoy your company. Fourth on the docket is the Tork, which stands for Tri OKC River Sport Challenge. And Tri OKC is our local triathlon club. So I'm going to introduce you to Alina Kroy. Alina is a systems analyst for our OKC Fire Department. She's a wife and mother of four. She has finished the Ironman three times. She's a past president of Tri OKC, is still on the board, and is the regatta director, or I mean, the, everything's a regatta in my world, the race director. So I'm going to let Alina talk a little about the race.
Is that a job offer? Very happy here. No, so the Tork, as she said, is a mouthful, the River Sport Adventure. This race is in its fourth year at River Sport. It's a two-day event. The first day on Saturday is a multi-sport race. So we have sprint triathlon, a duathlon, and aquabike, basically different flavors of triathlon, where athletes get to swim in the lower pool of River Sport, which is amazing. It's a pool, we spend a lot of time telling athletes it's not the river, because people think it's the river, and no one wants to swim in our river. But it's their pool, which is amazing. And then they get to bike through Oklahoma City. And we worked with Oklahoma City PD to put the bike course together, and they've been amazing to work with. We're the only race that races through Oklahoma City, so it's a big draw for people. We actually have people from 11 states, I checked yesterday, coming, which is crazy. I think we have someone from South Dakota coming down, which is great. And then on Saturday, or Sunday, excuse me, we do a 5K, 10K event. So every year, participation has gone up. I think we are looking at probably 250 people this year, and we're really excited about our medal. It spins. It's not going to spin, of course. But so, we still have some slots available. So if you guys want to come out, we also do a relay. So if you only want to do part of one of those things. And we also do an adventure try, which is where the swim is the biggest thing for people who don't want to do triathlon, that's scary. The adventure try allows you to kayak or paddleboard the swim. And we don't have time cutoffs. It's a very relaxed, chill event. So people of all paces and distances can come out and do it. So we're excited, and we love racing in the city. So, thank you.
Thanks. That one ends during the day, so there's no fireworks. Finally, is our Youth Rowing League, which is Saturday, November 8th. The Youth Rowing League is about 250 kids from 14 schools, maybe 15, 16 this year. They're mostly Title I schools that only really provide an advisor, someone to communicate with the team. River Sport provides coaches, practice time, water time. This rowing event at the end, and t-shirts. And we have a lot of great sponsors and a lot of great volunteers who get this. It's one of my favorite, I say it every year. It's my favorite, because these kids bring their brothers and sisters and moms and grandparents and aunts and uncles. They all show. Usually, a River Sport calculates the audience like one, one and a half for each participant. With this, it's almost three. So we're expecting maybe 800 people to watch 200 kids. It warms my heart to see kids who probably would not make the football team actually be off their phone, outside, getting exercise, and seeing the pride in their faces just makes my job great. So those are the five events on the docket. Does anyone have any questions?
All right. Well, we could start taking some votes, then. Thank you for all of that. Councilman Pennington, do you want to?
Sure, I'll get rolling.
Happy to do that. Very excited for all the exciting, the great events that are happening at the river. I did not know that, that serving in this seat meant that I would serve on the River Sport Foundation. So it's been a lot of fun so far. I can't commit to the Ironman just yet. But it does sound like a great, we could do the relay, the council.
There you go, see?
The adventure, with me? We're going to do a relay together? Councilwoman? Okay.
Don't challenge me. Come on, I'll do it.
We might, we might have the council doing it. So we'll see if we can make that happen. But very grateful for all the work that you're doing to bring great activities to our city and to our river. So with that, Mayor, I'll first, can we move for all, all the items at once? Or do I have to?
I asked, and the answer is no, one at a time.
All right, well, then I'll move item A, approval of item A.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes for item 8A. Councilman Cooper, have you voted? Ah, very good. Well, they just tell me sometimes. Passes unanimously, all right. 8B is the Holiday River Parade vote.
I move approval of item B.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 8C is the Regatta Festival.
I move approval.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 8D is the Tri OKC River Sport Challenge.
I move approval of item D.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 8E is the Youth Rowing League Championship.
I move approval of item E.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through M that we can take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCMPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A through D we could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCPPA and reconvene as the council, where we are on item nine, the Consent Docket. There are no presentations. Is there anything that anyone wishes to pull out for a separate vote? Discussion, question? Hearing none. Oh, we do have someone sign up to speak on item nine AD, and that is Frances Smith. If you state your name, address, and keep your remarks to three minutes or less.
Absolutely, I'm Frances Smith. I'm with the Oklahoma City Farmers Market District. Thank you all for having us here today. I just wanted to start with a few key accomplishments from the last fiscal year, because the city has supported our endeavors. We've been able to install our district banners, which is super exciting. We did a public reveal ceremony in May. We've been able to help secure funding for four major storefront improvements. We've had four seasonal festivals, which have included free cooking demonstrations, educational speakers, as well as showcasing all of our local vendors, food trucks, musicians, our farmers market, and the districts in our business. Environmentally, we have launched, and I'm right now working on expanding the cigarette litter recycle program with OKC Beautiful as a partner. We've participated in the Great American Cleanup and Litter Blitz events within our district. We are currently putting in a pollinator waste station that we're very excited about. We're building out a whole educational series and volunteer opportunities, doing that through the end of the year. We are also currently working on, one, identifying all the businesses in our very large borders that are active. And then we're working to put together a district meet and greets so that we can kind of connect and unify our district. Organizationally, we have expanded our board of directors. One was just sitting in here, Spencer Brown. We're so glad to have him. We've started and are actively working three committees. We're working with Matisse Group on our strategic plan, which has been developed, and we are progressing very well. We got a nine out of 10 from them on our ability to progress. And we have been working on policies and procedures as a nonprofit in our infancy stage. This is a big task, and we are working diligently on establishing that. Looking forward, we are going to continue to expand our educational programs, our volunteer opportunities, support business, also advancing our green space and infrastructure projects to strengthen the district's identity, vibrancy, and economic vitality. In closing, I just want to thank you all for investing in the Farmers Market District. Together, we are honoring history, building community, and creating a sustainable future for this very unique part of Oklahoma City. I'd like to open it up to questions, if any... I'd like to open it up to questions, if anybody wants me to expand on anything we've been doing or going to be doing. Thank you so much.
Here to speak on item 9AE.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, council members. Good morning. I'm Pilar Cipollone, president of La 29th District Association. And I'm just here to highlight a little bit of the incredible impact of the business along Southwest 29th Strip, which is one of the most commercial areas in Oklahoma City. Our district is home for 100 locally owned service provider. These businesses function serve the community. They create jobs, sponsor local events, and other safe, welcoming a lot of families. They pay property taxes and sales taxes to support schools, infrastructure, and public service. Many have invested in building and improving. We invite you to walk it and experience and continue support that entrepreneurs in our 29th District. Thank you for your time and for your support. And I invite you, if you really want to experience our authentic Mexican food, please come to La 29th. You will have the best experience there. Thank you.
You are correct.
Right?
Truly, yes.
29th is the best place. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 8H, Michael Washington.
This is what, nine?
Yes, 9AH. He also signed up for 9BY, so perhaps you can touch on that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Mike Washington, 100 Park Place, the one and only with the MS.
Oh, and CE. Sorry, also BY and CE. So you signed up for three items on the same item nine, so.
Okay. Sub-reception agreements with the homeless alliance. Numbers are not necessarily to be acknowledged. City rescue mission, Catholic charities, all to be provided money for the homeless and disadvantaged. You know what? We here, this committee and I, don't agree on much, but in this one instance, I have to admit that I'm very persuaded by the decision to allow the monies that's been selected for these particular projects to be given out to individuals living on the street, homeless, don't have money, maybe some not even families. But it's also targeting these same people who are on the street to be given, as you say, a rehousing initiative reactive for August 1st, 2025 through July 2026, and authorizing execution of necessary documents. I'm kind of thrown for a loop in that particular last sentence. Nevertheless, because I'm highly capable and intelligent enough, I can decipher pretty much. It has to do somewhat with promoting and assisting these charitable organizations. Let me say, oh, but I'm not finished. I think that this city making a move that we have is great, but I just got to dive in just a little bit and say, what about those that this money doesn't earmark or target for? How? I've been hearing people have been arrested because they sleep on a bridge. I've heard that they have been arrested for not moving quick enough or finding a house.
30 seconds remaining.
Oh, that always gets Michael. Well, I just get started, get the, ah. Now then. To get back and piggyback on the point that I started with the, with only 17 seconds, count it. I think this is a wonderful project that you people have come up with. And you guess what? I want everybody to know with eight seconds, seven, six, five remaining, that Michael is here to do what he can to assist these projects to the greatest fullest degree of his power. Amy, I got you. Thank you.
All right. We can take a motion and a second on the consent docket. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 10 is the concurrence docket. We have items A through K we can take with one motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11 are items for individual consideration. We have item 11A. This has an amendment to the master design statement and ordinance on final hearing rezoning 19301 Lutheran Road from AA to SPD 1695. And this was deferred a number of times and has a protest of 60.9%. Councilman Pennington, we do have one person signed up to speak in opposition.
Excellent. This is a case, I'd love to hear from our neighbor first, because I think we're gonna have several answers to the questions that she has, so that'd be great.
Okay. Kristin Dawson.
Hi, everyone. I'm Dr. Kristin Dawson. Before we start, I just want to say a quick thank you to Kamal Pennington and also to Debbie Martin, because I know it's frustrating for you to deal with people who don't know a lot about real estate and stuff like that. You guys have been extremely generous with your time. And I also want to thank you, because last time I came up here and spoke to you guys in May, one of my primary concerns was about the safety of the blind intersection, having an RV park there. And they listened to what I said, and that was by far my number one thing that I was most concerned about last time. And so thank you for that. As far as the changes for what is going on on this property, there have been many iterations. There was a new iteration on Thursday, and then another one this morning. But, is my understanding? Oh, it was the same one for Thursday. Okay. So there hasn't been a whole lot of time to do an in-depth analysis, but I'm gonna speak to you as best I can today. Okay, so number one, overwhelmingly, the neighbors that I've talked to, there was only one that was even borderline on changing the zoning. Every single other person I talked to was very opposed to it. I know that a bunch of people have sent in letters, I believe. And they have all been universally opposed to rezoning this property. And these are people that, you know, actually are living in the neighborhood versus a corporation that is trying to create a commercial development. Secondly, overwhelmingly, so it has gone through many iterations, and they have addressed a lot of concerns. But one thing that persists is that every single plan so far has been noise and imposition on the neighbor as far as noise. And that's been in every single plan. And so you kind of feel like you, since consent compromises have been made, you kind of feel like, oh, maybe I should just say yes. But every single plan is something that is the detriment to the lives of the people who actually live around there, whether that's the RV park, or whether this is gonna be clubhouse sports complex with pickleball courts. Throughout the nation, I was kind of doing my Googling, and there have been a bunch of lawsuits in cities about pickleball courts, because the pitch of the pickleball is different than like a basketball court or a tennis court. It's high pitch, and it's extremely annoying. And so a lot of those, they stay along the long axis. You need to not have anything within at least 500 feet, because that will lower the decibel level a little bit. Secondly, one of the things that I talked about with the neighbors that they had concerns about, they used to have the Chicken Shack, which is 1.1 mile away, and they were extremely annoyed by all the noise from that, and that was 1.1 miles away. And that moved, so thankfully that resolved. Nextly, traffic. I learned from Councilman Pennington that Lutheran Road is a private road, so there's no city upkeep on the road. We don't have a site plan for this, and so we don't know on that private road, are they gonna have to, are the neighbors gonna have to pay for, you know, increased maintenance on that road to support this, you know, financial endeavor by corporation? Also, personally, I'm concerned about the traffic of people. They have asked for an alcohol license for this. There, the Deep Fork River, I spoke on this last time. You may remember in May. I may have sounded a little overzealous when I said that this is a dangerous part of the Deep Fork, and that, for instance, this summer, our locks, we have locks and chains, so that people can't access this dangerous part through our property. We have locks and chains that keep getting cut off. In between, when I talked to you guys in May, and now, somebody died there. And I just, you know, personally, I know that's not something you can always prevent, but I don't personally want a whole lot of people that are able to be served alcohol within walking distance of this particularly dangerous part of the river. Sorry, I'm nervous. Oh, you are? Okay. Can I say one more thing? That might be important.
Sure.
I'm not sure how, you know, up to date you guys keep your county assessor records, but in terms of looking, looking and listening to the people who actually live there, whose enjoyment could be affected by this development versus a corporation that has multimillion dollar properties. And the last thing I was gonna say is that they have so many properties, that if this is correct, maybe it's not. According to that county assessor, they don't even own the property. Like, because I believe it was Gold Jack that filed this, right? And if Gold Jack filed it, they don't even own it. They sold it last December. So I don't know how that affects the process, and if that's just a little, you know, thing that needs to, you know, cross and dot and get taken care of, or if you have to refile it. But, I mean, this is people whose lives are actually affected versus someone who doesn't even know that they don't own the property, to my knowledge. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Pennington?
Thank you. Well, just, first of all, and I really appreciate Ms. Dawson. I know that she's trying to, it's difficult to engage with the rezoning processes. I'm sure we all know from us having to be involved in it all the time. We've come a long way. So we started an RV park and some other commercial uses. We came down to some cabins and that, some proposed uses there. So we went back and visited with Ms. Dawson. She had some more concerns. We made some further adjustments. So now, at this point, we're talking about the existing church facility that is there, that's already on the property. And the uses that the applicant is asking to put in there is a, let me make sure I say it, a community recreational that is, and allows for an eating establishment that is sit-down, alcohol permitted, that is accessory to the use unit for community recreation. So first of all, let me ask the planning director, so we can have clarity of exactly what that means. What's the difference between community recreational, limited to accessory to the use of that for an eating establishment? What's the difference between that and just having a restaurant? That seems to be part, and then we'll ask the applicant to come up and talk about the other concerns Ms. Dawson had.
Yeah. Let us look up the code for a second here. Sarah's flipping it out.
David?
We can read it.
Good morning. David Box, 525 Northwest 11th. So as Councilman Pennington said, this, the spud, well, when it went through Planning Commission, it was recommended for approval unanimously. And at that time, it allowed for RV pads, cabins, and those things. To my knowledge, every specific request we've had from Ms. Dawson, we have agreed to. And I think we've actually gone further than what she has asked for. And so what we're left with, frankly, along Route 66, is a very minimal development at this point. It's a clubhouse that would allow for, you know, the service of food and alcohol. We're willing to stipulate that the service of food and alcohol is limited to the existing building. We're willing to limit it to one pickleball court. What she's referring to with the lawsuits that have been filed nationally on pickleball facilities, are when there's multiple right adjacent to a traditional single-family neighborhood with multiple lots. Here, my guess is there's gonna be more noise from traffic along Route 66 than the single pickleball court. The large complexes are what is generating complaints for pickleball courts in close proximity single-family residential. We don't have that here. I don't, the closest home is, I think, a good distance away. So it's one of those cases where it's a bit challenging for me and my client, when we're asked to change something, we change it. And then here we are, the morning of council, new requests are coming in, and new concerns. There's only so much we can do. My belief is, we have kept this individual in the loop. I think we've sent her the revised documents at every turn. So it's still recommended for approval by your staff. It was recommended for approval at a much more intense development unanimously by your planning commission. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't really know where to go from here at this point. We've taken just about every residential component away, which was the big concern, with RV pads and cabins. Those have all been removed. It's now basically a clubhouse that would allow for the sale of food and alcohol.
So, and again, limited only to that facility, that existing church facility.
Yes, sir.
Can we hear from the planning director quickly?
Yes, so would you mind repeating the question?
The difference between community recreation that also has the accessory use of eating establishments sit-down, what's the difference between that and a restaurant?
Oh, gotcha. Okay. So we have, we have three kind of community recreation, general property owners and restricted. They're asking for the Community Recreation Property Owners Association and Community Recreation General. And then they're also asking for eating establishments, sit-down, alcohol permitted. And the difference between, so they're asking for, sorry, I didn't quite.
It to be accessory to the community recreation use versus being a standalone use unit of eating establishments. Like, what's the difference? That's the concern that she has.
Okay. I don't know. Sarah, you're gonna have to help me out on this one. I'm not sure about that. Yeah, go ahead and come on in.
Sarah Welch, Sarah Welch, Planning Department. The restaurant would allow it a standalone use, so you'd have customers coming from all over. And in my understanding, this is limited to the guests of the property, correct? We apologize. We have not seen a lot of the changes since Thursday's master design statement.
So the real difference is, it wouldn't be like a restaurant that would just have normal hours of operation. If some sort of family reunion was there, that facility would then be open as the accessory to the community recreation use unit. So it's even further limited from what a restaurant could be.
So, okay. So my other question was about the family daycare homes.
We can remove that.
And we'll just remove that. So then the other question that I'm certain that Ms. Dawson would ask is, if this property were sold, what would they be able to do with this property? It sounds like, based on what I'm reading in the zoning, would be they'd have to, they'd be allowed to have this community recreational use clubhouse in the existing building, and they'd be able to build a garden, a home garden, a hoop house, or homes.
Yeah, and that's it. I mean, obviously, the zoning will run with the land. It would be limited to just those things.
So then the only question left council members on, for me, So, then the only question left council members on, for me, is, and I appreciate Ms. Dawson, I know that it's, can be scary, changes is difficult, especially when you're dealing with zoning cases. The question for me is, what's the noise difference between having a church that can have regular activities any day of the week, people coming in and out? What's the meaningful difference between that and the activities that could be having at any active congregation, church, and having a clubhouse? Because to me, it's the same level of, that's the question before us. And so, for me, and I appreciate Ms. Dawson's concern, and that's why I've tried to make sure that we've asked the right questions to address the specific concerns that she has. If we're talking about a clubhouse and we're talking about houses and one pickleball court, to me, that seems like a reasonable use of property along Route 66.
I'm going to ask the dumbest question.
No, you're not. It's not.
Buckle up. Forgive me, and I'm kind of looking at former Commissioner Hinkle and thinking of your commission role as well. I don't understand anymore the proposal, because if the original proposal was much more about like RV to allow for that, agricultural, recreation, lodging uses, but now it's just this existing property that's, or the existing structure that's on the property, right, that I looked up on the map at Lutheran and Route 66?
Yes, sir.
So, that's now going to be a version of a restaurant, is what I'm hearing?
Think of like, if you were going to have a family reunion?
Sure.
It would be a place to rent out the space, and they would be able to provide for the service of food and alcohol for basically a special event like that.
So, like the weddings and these sorts of things that I've gone to and wherever?
But not, not weddings, but yeah, yeah, like some sort of family event. I mean, it's, I understand your question, it's so limited now.
That's the main thing I'm getting at.
That it's, it's limited to some, some one-off events that might occur.
I guess that's kind of my main dum-dum question here, is this, this no longer feels like what went to Planning Commission.
Oh, it's significantly stripped down.
And so, that just raises just some like basic process questions for me of like, Planning Commission looked at one proposal, I'm not even saying I agree with what the proposal was, I'm just saying Planning Commission looked at one proposal, and now we are talking about but a fourth of that proposal, if at all, I guess the recreational aspect of it. And I'm just, it's just, it's creating a lot of confusion for me in my head about the council's role at this part of the process. If Planning Commission looked at something, staff looked at something, and now we're looking at something called Item C, you know, wasn't, that's just, I don't know, I've never been in a situation like this before.
It's a fair question. The concern is typically if we are adding things or it's becoming more intense than perhaps what Planning Commission would have seen. Here, we've gone backwards from what Planning Commission unanimously deemed appropriate. So, understand the question, I don't know that it is a concern, you guys are elected to make the decisions ultimately. It's not uncommon that you see, you know, when you see your agenda and there are amendments to the PUD, that is because there have been changes from what Planning Commission has seen oftentimes.
You've really had your opportunity unless you would like to invite her to come forward again, Councilman.
Sure.
I was just going to explain it from my perspective.
If you could take a microphone.
I think what the deal is and why Councilwoman Pennington is working so hard on this is to give the neighbors a say. And the reason for that is, from everybody I talk to, there are notification requirements before it goes to the Planning Commission, and you can never assure that anybody receives their mail, but everyone in the neighborhood I talked to, only one person actually got the notification. So, they only talked to one person prior to the zoning commission. So, now, now that more neighbors know about it and they're sending in protests, the zoning commission didn't hear any of those people before. So, now they're trying to make it work and hear the neighbors, but a lot of this should have been litigated at the zoning level. That's my take.
Notice was proper. Notice gets sent out twice in Oklahoma City, which is uncommon, most cities have one round. So, notice got sent out before Planning Commission, somebody showed up at Planning Commission, we deferred it, we went and met with them, we modified the spud, notice got sent out again, this individual came, we've deferred it multiple times, we've modified it to her request every single time, and then every single time we show up, there are additional requests made.
So, in a nutshell, this started out to be a KOA campground, and now it's a wedding venue. Well, not a wedding venue, but a rentable venue for one-day events.
Correct.
Or a weekend event, or, I mean, so, it's, I got you.
So, again, for me, the comparison is, one, to Councilman Cooper's point, initial question, we've come down, it's significantly less than what it was when it went to Planning Commission. And so, when we're really talking about the uses that are the most of concern, that could be the most disruptive, it is the building that they're going to limit to community recreation, which is like any other community center that would be at any other in my neighborhood or yours. So, that's what we've come all the way down to. If council doesn't feel like we're clear, even though we've sent the red line version, you don't feel like we have enough information about what, where we are now, then of course we can, we can take a continuance. But in my view, the question is, is it more disruptive than a church would be? If it's a clubhouse, and in my view, it's not any more disruptive, except this time, we required the screening between this property and the other ones, we allow for homes to be built around that area, and we've eliminated any other uses where there's any other questions about what could happen in the space. So, I'm comforted by that. I do appreciate Ms. Dawson's concern about there being some area nearby that, that's, I guess, fenced off where there, people have climbed the fence and there's been issues, but I would, I proffer that that's going to be the same problem if you put homes there that people may decide to trespass and go on that property. So, this is on Route 66, we've come from RV parks and cabins down to just being able to limit, all the uses being limited to just that church. Even if it's, if it is sold, it's just going to be limited to, again, the uses being in that church building, seems reasonable to me at this point. But if we, if council's not comfortable, let's continue.
It seems very reasonable to me, and we've addressed issues like this before, we pared it down.
It's our decision, and I'd like to just move forward with, on it at this time.
Other members' concerns?
I hear what Councilor Stonecypher is saying. I guess my only final question is, like, legally, how are we feeling about this topic, item?
I was afraid you were going to ask that question.
Well, because I do ask questions that are tough.
Yes. Legally, I believe, as Mr. Box answered, and I agree with his answer, I think the planning commission looked at all the elements that could be included in this, this item. So, essentially, you've stripped it down, is what you've done. You've made it a less intense use, and it was a more intense use is what they looked at and reviewed. So, I, I don't think you have a legal problem in approving it.
So, I would, I would say, let's confirm the amendments. Limited, we'd be limiting use units 8250.3, 8250.2, 8300.8 to the existing facility, existing church on the property, would be eliminating use unit 8300.40.
Yes.
And those would be, those are the changes.
Yes, sir.
And to be clear, these are new amendments in addition to the mandatory list.
In the red line, yep.
So, this will be a separate vote, standalone, just that, with what you just stated.
Yes. Perfect. Thank you, keeping me on process there. So, that's my motion.
Okay.
To amend the MDS to that.
As described. All right, so let's take a motion and a second on that series of amendments.
I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong screen.
Motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then, do you also need the amendment listed on the agenda?
Oh, the-
The amendment to the master design statement.
Yes. So, let's approve, I'll move approval of that.
Motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And are there any other changes, or are we on the ordinance now, E2?
I think we're on to the ordinance at this point, because we've effectively taken the red line version, then approved those amendments, then approved some additional changes to that. So, with that, Mayor, I move approval.
Okay. And this vote requires seven votes because of the high level of protest.
Unless I have, unless my colleagues would prefer to take a delay, a continuance.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously and with the necessary supermajority due to the protest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item 11B is an ordinance on final hearing, that was rezoning, it was recommended for approval, rezoning 3223 Northwest 178th Street from PUD 1891 to SPD 1705. This was deferred a number of times as well. Councilman Stonecypher, no one has signed up to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. David, on this item, we are deferring it till October, is that correct?
Yes, sir. October 21st.
All right. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to defer this item to October 21st.
Okay. Have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That item is deferred.
Thank you.
11C, ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, closing all of the platted public alleyways in Block 3, Trosper Park Island Edition. Councilman Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak?
They have not.
All right. This is recommended for approval by staff and by the planning commission. So, with that, I'll go ahead and move for its approval.
We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item D1 is the public hearing regarding dilapidated structures here listed. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we will advance to the resolution at D2, declaring that structures Have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11E1 is the public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we'll advance to the resolution declaring that structures are unsecured, founded E2, of course, except for those previously struck.
Mayor, thank you.
Have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Cast your votes. Getting ahead of myself. Passes unanimously. All right. 11F1 is the public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we'll advance to the resolution declaring that the buildings are abandoned. That resolution is founded F2, and of course, this is, except for those previously struck. Have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11G is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust, authorizing the general manager of the trust, or his designated, the city manager of the city, or his designated, to negotiate an economic development agreement not to exceed $8 million to support the development of a Shields sporting goods store. And we have a presentation on this.
Yes. Kenny Soodle, with the president of the Alliance for Economic Development, will present this item for us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Excited to bring to you this joint resolution, this project for incentive for a Shields store, just to give the broad overview on this thing. What this would provide is a maximum over 10 years of $8 million. We intend to bring back, this would be the allocation, so this is kind of thinking like the term sheet, we have to bring back, obviously, the contract with the Economic Development Trust, but would intend to have in there that also, it has an $800,000 a year limit. To, also, just to make sure we check the boxes, this does comply with our retail policy. We looked at this, you know, did market studies and looking at this project. It's estimated that over 50% of the sales would come from outside a 25-mile radius, and over 75% of the sales would come from outside the city limits. Trevor Klein, the Director of Operations for Shields, is here, is going to give a presentation and talk to you more about the project, but just what this is all based on is approximately $130 million a year of sales. So, if you kind of look at that in that perspective, we, as always, we only look at the net new sales, incentives are a negotiated amount, only out of the new money that comes in, and, you know, as an estimate, looking at that, the general fund portion on $130 million of sales would be like in the $2.9 million range, you know, if an $800,000 incentive is given, the city would still receive the other 2.1 in general fund, not counting the other taxes. So, it's also a major capital improvement, and there's some really good job creation on this as well, and I'm going to invite Trevor Klein up, and he's going to give you a presentation, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Good morning. Trevor Klein with Shields. I'll be brief in respect for the council's time. I guess the first, the only thing I really wanted to answer for you this morning a little bit is, who is Shields? I think we get that a lot, certainly as I've, you see some of the social media stuff floating around, it's always, always interesting, but, you know, who are we as a company? Because I do think there are some differentiators with Shields compared to maybe some other retailers, and hopefully what we can bring and partner with Oklahoma City. So, the first thing is, we're employee-owned. It's, it's one of the unique things about our company, we're one of the largest ESOPs in the country, we're 100% employee-owned, we're not, we're not publicly traded, we're not owned by one person or one family. And that's one of the unique things. We're really split out between our 44, about 4,400 employee owners, many of which, there'll be new ones when we move to Oklahoma City here and grow in this area. And I think that fundamentally changes how business operates, because really, we're doing the best that we can do for our associates and always thinking long-term, never short-term, never about what's best for our stock price in the next six months or whatever it would be. We're always thinking long-term and long-term partnerships. Second, customer experience, it's, it's huge at Shields. If you've been to a Shields store, hopefully you've been, whether you've been down into Texas or to Oklahoma City or up to Overland Park, it's one of the unique factors about our store of, yep, it's got a Ferris wheel and all the bells and whistles, and it's a beautiful store, but from a people perspective, we have a lot of long-term associates. Being employee-owned, you have people, the tenure of our associates, and what we invest in them for training, whether that's through universities or hiring passionate experts, and especially of how we compensate those associates. So, you'll find, when you go to a store, if you're going to go in today's day and age, you want to talk to somebody who knows what they're talking about, who's passionate about hunting and fishing, or who's passionate about running, or whatever that would be, and you'll run into those experts in our stores. And we really pride ourselves on customer service, and I think that's one of the things you'll notice if you've been to one of our stores. And then, of course, the third one, I think, will be fun for Oklahoma City, is I've talked to more people in the community, you know, we have specialty shops, we're not just a big-box retailer. And all of the, when you go to a store like Shields, you'll find that it's really catered to the local market, because we have local associates and they do the buying on a local level, but we have all the high-end brands that, whether it's On Running, or Mizzen in Maine, or Victoria, some things that are perhaps maybe hard to find, you'll have them at Shields. Our bike shop will be like a specialty bike shop, and we partner with Trek and other retail, or other vendors to really create those experiences. Instead of a big box, it's really going to feel like your small-town archery shop, or bike shop, or fashion boutique. So, it is a unique experience, and every one of those specialty shops is run by specialty shop managers. Kind of the unique one, where are we going, or who are we? We're not very big. So, when you, when you think about Shields, we only have 34 stores today. The proposed store for Oklahoma City would be our 38th. We don't build a lot of stores. Again, we're employee-owned, we're very conservative in our growth, we maybe build one store a year, sometimes two if it lines up perfectly, but we're very conservative, making sure that, you know, slow and steady wins the race. And as I mentioned before, we're kind of a, we're not a microwave, we're a crock pot. And so, we're very, we're very, I guess, take our time to expand and make sure we're in communities that we want to be in and want to grow into. So, yeah, 34 stores, we're going to Cedar Park, Texas, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and then you'll find us hopefully here in Oklahoma City in 2028, so. And lastly, which I think is, is important, especially hearing some of the things with how we started today's city council meeting, we're going to be just a fantastic partner, a lot of places say that, but this, we have a lot of programs in place, and why are you in business? Well, number one, to take care of our employee owners. I think every business is in, you know, they want to take care of their, their owners or their employees. Number two, we want to provide a service for the community. We want to be a great place where you can shop and find the coolest gear, of course. But the big one, and Steve Shield really embodied this in our company, but we're going to give back to our communities and make our communities a better place. And so, there's a lot of ways we do that. Of course, we have give-back programs where our people can donate their time, and we help assist and pay them to do that. Every full-time associate gets $500 a year that they can give to whatever charity they want, any 501(c) or frankly, a great cause that they have. And then, on top of that, we give back a percentage of our profits. So, a store this size will give back well in excess of $500,000 a year, all to the local community, every single year, over and over. In addition to that, we also have our foundation on top of that. So, you really have four or five methods where you'll see Shields involved in the community, and it's not just lip service, but it is truly, we embody ourselves, and we don't have a lot of marketing campaigns or flashy commercials or all those things. We're very much grassroots, and you will feel the impact of a Shields store in your community and how we involve ourselves locally. And then, lastly, of course, what's the economic impact? And so, here's, I think, just some interesting stats. Here's the most, the 40 most popular sporting goods stores in the country, and the 40 most popular apparel stores in the country in terms of traffic. country, and the 40 most popular apparel stores in the country in terms of traffic. There's a lot of Shields stores on there. I don't know if anybody's been to Eau Claire, Wisconsin, but it's pretty small. It's a town of about 65,000 people, and it's busier than just about every one of our competitors in the sporting goods category throughout the country. Even if you go to apparel and footwear, if you look at, you know, the big Macy's, or Bloomingdale's, or whatever it would be, there's Shields stores. And what that means to Oklahoma City and the community is, we're going to draw a lot of people, a lot of people outside of this community, what, 250-mile radius. I worked at the Texas store, it was amazing how many folks we drew from Oklahoma, how many people I run into in Oklahoma City of, hey, we go to the, go to the Shields store in the Colony, Texas, down by Frisco. But we'll average 2.5 million visitors a year, over a two-hour stay, and then on top of that, besides all the sales tax that will be created, from a jobs perspective, 200-plus full-time jobs that today average over 55,000. I'm sure that will be higher in 2028, but those jobs range anywhere from entry-level, you know, about 50,000 for a specialty shop manager, all the way up to about 120,000 for assistant store leaders. Plus, on top of that, we'll have 300-plus part-time positions, which today averages north of, it's about $22, $23 an hour for part-time pay, when you add that in. So overall, the payroll for that store, I know it says 13 to 16, will probably be somewhere between 15 and 16 million dollars a year. So we really pride ourselves in taking great care of our associates, because those are our owners. And then, of course, there's a construction impact as well. So. Who is Shields? I mean, we're a lot of things. It's hard to explain. It's a weird Swiss Army knife of things, but we're not a department store, we're not sporting goods, we're not a mall. We're just somewhat unique in that aspect, and we're very excited to hopefully partner with the city of Oklahoma, or with, partner with Oklahoma City and bring a new store here in 2028. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions you may have.
OKC Talk, other publications, I have had person after person after person come up to me, and they're so excited about this development coming to Oklahoma City. It's not a grab-and-go store. It's a family store for an all-day experience with an aquarium, and Ferris wheel, and restaurant, and so the people I've talked to are really excited about it. If you look in today's paper, and you really want to dive into it, Steve Blackmire did an article about all the amenities with this store, and so I'd encourage people to take a look at today's Oklahoman and the Steve Blackmire article, and I look forward to you coming to Oklahoma City, sir.
Yeah, the cat's kind of out of the bag. We haven't officially announced, but yeah, it's amazing in today's day and age, the OKC Talk, yeah, it's fun to read those comments.
Again, sounds like a wonderful story. I look forward to going. My question is actually more for Kenny about the incentives. So could you explain how this incentive works? What are the metrics that go with, if we vote yes, explain the metrics that Shields is required to meet in order to receive the incentive?
So we'll be bringing back a contract that embeds those metrics, and the intent was, you know, it would be limited to over 10 years, a max of $8 million over 10 years. We intend to bring a max of 800,000 per year, and then we also intend to bring that there's a minimum of $100 million of sales, or they don't get anything each year. You know, I think, Trevor, they feel pretty comfortable with that, which I will tell you is a pretty high bar on these types of incentives. So they have to build the store, you know, and it has to generate this level of sales for them to get that.
So we'll have to, we'll see in the contract details, this, so this is just enabling us to engage further. Okay, that makes sense.
But it definitely will be structured as a pay-for-performance.
Excellent. Thank you. Let me, let me also say that I'm glad we have those metrics. Good, wish you all the best if you, if council approves this proposal in meeting that, those sales projections. For me, the item that you spoke about that is the most important are the wages. Seeing part-time wages, you said on average, would you say that number again?
They're about 22 to 23 on average, part-time, a lot of those associates now, so it's, and it will range as high as 30, but entry-level cashiers are probably about 16 or so, depending on what, if it's just a part-time cashier, but really, that's continued to rise and rise. But most of our sales associates, merchandisers, support throughout the store is going to be much higher than that.
We haven't had a chance to talk. Would you briefly explain to me, the council, the public, why those wages, especially even for the entry level?
Pardon? What is your question?
I know, it's actually a very, like, simplistic question, so I might have just caught you off guard by its simplicity. Why those starting wages?
Oh, why those starting wages? Well, we're looking for great people, and, you know, retention is really important to what we do, even in a part-time associate. I started part-time when I was in college, and, you know, so whether it's a part-time associate, you'll see a lot of our part-timers work for us for a long period of time, whether that's throughout high school, extended into their college years, or the entire four years of college, or really the gamut of part-time people that we have. I mentioned at the Economic Trust, one of the former FedEx executives is a part-timer for us in, in our archery shop down in Texas. So we have, it's an interesting mix of, you have the 16-year-old person, it's their very first job in high school, to very tenured folks, and so from a wage perspective, we really want to make sure that we're at the top of retail, and retain those people, and just get the best quality applicants.
Thank you.
Can I make a slight correction to Councilman Pennington? I think we had negotiated to have an $854,000 a year limit, per annually, I said 800, so I just want to make sure, but it's still, the total over time would only be 8 million. So thank you for the reminder, Joanne.
Well, we have a resident who signed up to speak, so there are a couple, so we'll, if we're done with the presentation, then we can call those residents up. Okay, Michael Washington?
Well, 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 Mr. Shields, that's not your name, that's just the company you employ, right? You want to now come into Oklahoma City, just offer such great services to us, and we don't even know you. I'm not talking about your partners in the sales divisions, or in the corporate world. What I'm talking about is what you actually bring to me, and are you going to actually produce what you sell, or do we get so trapped in and say, oh, Lord, it's too late now? We still got to accept them now. No pun intended, no disrespect to anyone, but you just can't ask the citizens to walk home and to accept something they don't know about, because we may, or the Greater Chamber of Commerce might want. No, sir, we know that didn't happen without them, don't we, who run the city? Now then. Associates, wonderful. Part-timers, wonderful. That's right. Look, get the looks on me, because I don't, I don't bite my tongue for anybody, because I'm independent, and will remain that way until I die. And he went, and heaven, God going to say, well done, my good and faithful servant, having said that, sir, while your eyes are bawling, let's get back to my point. Now then. We're going to generate, I believe, at least $850,000 a year, if the project doesn't work out. I may have misunderstood that. We've already got 30-some-odd stores in various cities in the state of the United States, which is great, but not one time did I hear you say, nor one time did I see the faces that you showed, did I see a black face. Michael, acknowledge and have to see these things, because it's very important when you're talking to our employees' own. Our employees' own our businesses, and we're not a one-market sales department.
30 seconds remaining.
But sir, I am willing to give you, at your Shields, an opportunity to show Michael what you're made of. And you can best believe, sir, this is not targeting you, they'll tell you this is high speaking, every, whenever I feel like I want it, ain't you personally, I don't even know you. But I definitely wish you success, too, because we do need to generate more money here in the state of Oklahoma, if we're going to, especially with 2.1 billion general fund. Amy, thank you so much again, but you cut me off too quickly. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Mike Reynolds?
Thank you. My name's Mike Reynolds. I'm 74 years old. I've lived in South Oklahoma City within three miles of the same area for 66 years. My grandmother, grandfather moved here before statehood, South Oklahoma City. Now, this is all of Oklahoma City, and this is ridiculous. I fought this when I was in the legislature, and I'll fight it now. Giving away money to corporations that may or may not be able to make a profit without taxpayer gifts, taxpayer, I'll be paying for it, the citizens where I live will be paying this money, and each one of you know it. So I'm here today, I am going to confront you, I am going to do it from now on. I've been out of the cycle for some time. These gifts, these giveaways have to be exposed, and this is minute. What keyed me up today? I got my water bill yesterday, $167. I've lived in the same house for 43 years, it was $27. Somehow, the price of water has gone up sixfold. What is going on with this body? That you can allow things like that? You got a law passed in the legislature last year, so that you can steal property from homeowners that can't afford to mow their lawns. If they don't pay their taxes, their property taxes in Oklahoma, what happens? After three years of non-payment of property taxes, an individual's house can be taken. But you guys got a law passed last year that says if they don't pay a mowing lien, the city can foreclose on it. A mowing lien is above property taxes for people that can't even afford to mow their yards. But this great economic development, why don't you divert this 8 million and help somebody pay the, clean up their property, or whatever? This is so disgusting, this is so far from the foundations of our country, that it is absurd, and I will start bringing it to your attention. I will be asking my councilman, I'll be seeing how he's going to vote on this, but I'll be asking my councilman why he could possibly support this kind of giveaway. This company looks like a fantastic company. If they can't make a profit without the citizens of Oklahoma City subsidizing, they have no excuse, no reason to come to Oklahoma City. And what else does it do? It gives them a huge gap over their competitors that don't get the giveaways. That's what you're doing. You're picking the winners, picking the losers, and it is absolutely absurd. I'll be back, more to come.
Thank you. That concludes the citizens who've signed up to speak. Now we could take a motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes 8 to 1. All right. Now we're on to the next item, which is 11H. This is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust approving the allocation of GEO limited tax bond proceeds in an amount not to exceed $175,000 for the provision of certain job-creation economic development incentives to Kearney National, Inc. And I think we have a presentation to make.
Yes. Kenny is back to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Kenny Soodle with the Alliance for Economic Development. So wanted to bring this joint resolution before you, that is part of our strategic investment program, that it's funded through our Gulp bonds, and this is for Kearney National, doing business as HAPCO. And Fred Vermeer, the former CEO and president, who's still working on this project, is going to give us a short presentation about this project. But just as an overarching summary, this would help incentivize the creation of 81 new jobs over the next five years, estimated average wages of just under $51,000. It also, you know, this is based on estimating, kind of having a first year payroll of around $1 million, just under, and ramping up to $4 million by the end of that fifth year. There's also quite a bit of capital expenditure involved with this, about $51 million. So with that, I'm going to turn this over, and the overall incentive would only be the $175,000, again, paid over time as a pay-for-performance type of incentive. So with that, I'll turn it over to Fred to tell you a little bit about, more about the project.
Good morning. My name is Fred Vermeer. I'm the former president and CEO of HAPCO, and now the project manager, to make sure that this project actually materializes. As you can see, HAPCO is actually the trade name. We're working under the legal entity of Kearney National, who is a wholly-owned subsidiary of the Dyson Kisten Moran Corporation that are located in New York. What do we do? We actually manufacture aluminum light poles, and aluminum light poles are just the next generation of light poles after the steel and the concrete poles that you see a lot in the United States. We were established in 1843, and have been in business now under the name of HAPCO for 60-plus years. Why aluminum? Our poles are superior to other materials, because they have low cost of ownership, and I think that's important for the owners of their light poles, especially for DOTs and municipalities. They're lightweight, they do not rust, so they don't need to be painted, and they are environmentally friendly. The company is located in Abingdon, Virginia, and we're pretty well-established on the East Coast. We like to go further west, and we, we actually looked at multiple places to be able to do that, and we kind of looked at how can we supply our raw material, which we also manufacture, but that's being done at Tri-City Extrusion in Bristol, Virginia, in Bristol, Tennessee, and we looked at a 10-mile radius around, for our trucks, how can we get our trucks in 10 miles, and then, or 10 hours, and then we can get them back and do the next round. So we looked at I-40, and fortunately, Oklahoma City is right on I-40, and makes almost a straight shot. You don't have to make a lot of turns to get from I-40 at Knoxville all the way up to Oklahoma City. So that's kind of how we looked at it, and we ended up here. But let me tell you a little bit more about our poles also. We recently also started to work in the solar business, so we now also make a pole that is suited for solar. And most recently, and you've seen this big, beautiful light pole being erected at the state Capitol, or at the, at the Capitol in Washington, and that's also a pole that we manufacture. Where do we sell? We sell to a lot of customers, mostly utilities, but also Department of Transportation, and a lot of light fixtures companies. I actually think that we're in, we call ourselves pole guys, but we're actually in the safety business, because why do we have light? It's because you want to see things at the interstate, at your municipalities downtown, you want to be safe, and when there is light, there's normally a lot of safety. So we're in 30 states, 45 municipalities. One thing that you see on here, you don't see on the, on the slide, Oklahoma City. We, one of my goals is that before this building is up and running, we want to have the Oklahoma City also converted from steel poles to aluminum poles, okay? So I'll probably be back. We manufacture, we're not a sales outfit, but we manufacture products. We're thinking about 81 jobs. I think that's a little on the low side, but we try to be conservative. In five years, average salary is about $51,000, and our investment is a little over $50 million, with almost $36 in a building that we're building here, and the rest is equipment that we put out. We already talked about why Oklahoma, you're on I-40, you have a good workforce, it's stable. You actually have some welders, you know, here that do steel welding, we do aluminum welding, but in our experience, we can work with colleges and set up training facilities at the college for that. And we actually done that in Abingdon. We work with the local college, and we actually have set up a aluminum welding class there, that not only helps us, but also other companies in the area. The potential site that we're looking at is OKC 577. I think you're familiar with that. It's right on 240. We like the environment there. We, we feel like it's easy shipping in and shipping out, so good for our product. If you ever seen our product, it's long. If you ever seen our product, it's long. It's not easy handling. You just don't need a fork truck or a pallet. It takes a little bit of work to put it on a truck and get it out. But the location that we have selected is very well-suited for that. On the civic engineering and philanthropy, we do work very well with the colleges, but also with the local workforce development. We like to be very much in contact with that. Our employees, they support baseball teams and football teams and high schools and things like that. We're very in favor of that also. And with that, we love to be here. We'd like to get your approval for this project and start working. Perfect.
Thank you.
All right. We could take a motion on this item if there's no other questions or comments.
Actually, I do. I have questions. Kenny? Would you walk us through how this item will work similarly to how you walked us through with Shields, please?
Yes, and I think this is similar in that this is the allocation, you know, and we'll bring back a contract that would lay out those things. And Joanna, correct me if I hit anything different, but it's a different program, but it's based more on the payroll. So they have to actually create the jobs that hit the minimum required salary, benefits, those sorts of things. And it's after those jobs are created, laid out the payroll, they submit to Joanna's office, to, you know, the economic development office, and they get some portion of that rebated. It's a negotiated percentage, but the 175 would be the cap over the whole period of time.
It's the 81 jobs that they are to create?
Yes. Yep. If they create more, they don't get additional.
They don't get, because there's the cap.
It's capped at that amount. Yep.
And they also have to demonstrate it this way, or sorry, the salary?
Yeah, salary and benefits.
And benefits.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. If there's no other comments or questions, we can take a motion, which looks like we've got, got a motion in a second. Passes 7 to 1. Okay. Next up is item 11I. This is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust approving allocations from Increment District Number Nine's Public Improvements and Development Budget category in an amount not to exceed $350,000, and Increment District Number Fifteen's Improvements and Development Budget category in an amount not to exceed $150,000 to contribute towards the construction of the Clara Luper Civil Rights Center. Do we have a presentation on this? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Kenny Suttlert, the Alliance. We brought you a SIP deal. We brought you a retail deal, so I thought I'd bring you a TIF deal also, so we just cover all. And we're also going to have a FIM deal. So we're using all of our tools today. This one, just excited to bring forward again, you know, I think where we've had MAPS projects that are geographically located inside of TIF districts, if there's been opportunities to kind of help with some of those things, this is another example of that, you know, where we've helped with like Palomar, we've helped with the multipurpose stadium, things like that. So this one, it would be one that we would take a little bit of funds from a couple different TIF districts and put it towards helping to really cover what the estimated base budget bids would be for this project for the Clara Luper Center. So that's really, it's sort of like an allocation from TIF to MAPS, so kind of from ourself to ourself. But Christina Beatty is here, and she is going to walk us through kind of just the project, what we're looking at, and kind of walk you through the budget and why this $500,000 is needed to supplement. So Christina, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Christina Beatty. I'm Executive Director of the Freedom Center and here to share a little bit about the project, give you an update, well, introduce to some and give an update to others. So for those who are not familiar with the project, it's located on Martin Luther King Avenue, just north of 23rd Street. The building itself, the new construction will be sited between Madison and 24th, and this is just a block down from the historic Freedom Center Building, which is there at 25th. You see it there under construction. That's a building that we have worked to restore with private funding. So these are just going to be a couple of renderings to give you a sense of what the new construction will look like. Overall, we're looking at a roughly 17,000-square-foot building with classroom spaces, administrative spaces, event hall for both our programs and for rental revenue. Yeah, that's the image right there, Freedom Hall. And so these next few images we'll go through will show you a sense of the inside layout, the floor plans. So that was kind of highlighting, again, the event spaces. This is more the education and community spaces with classrooms, boardroom, lounge, and gallery. We have our administrative offices as well as, and then the next color, I believe, is pink. Yes. And this highlights really what we are hoping to allocate these TIF funds towards, the storytelling elements, the gallery elements. And so while there have been some shifts and changes, and we're pushing a formal gallery into a future phase, we did make sure to include storytelling elements in the current first phase of the project. And so these are just some really initial renderings, giving you a sense of how these spaces can do double duty. We widened the hallway to 13 feet wide so that there's more than enough egress, but also giving us room to really use those walls. We're looking at that entry lounge, and this is the pre-function area to the main event hall, to be able to use those for storytelling as well. We're looking at a combination of projections or screens, you know, putting things in terms of vinyl on the wall and actually using artifacts from our archive. And so we're looking at a multiplicity of ways to do storytelling throughout the space. So this is the overall budget summary for MAPS. You'll see, of course, the overall budget is 26.8, but with the operations and maintenance endowment, it's really 17, almost 0.2 that goes towards the actual project. But if you'll see that last line, construction is actually 11.8. And so that's, you know, what we're working with in terms of the building itself. That money really is all going to be absorbed by constructing the physical building. And so it was very important to our MAPS Force Subcommittee that storytelling elements be included in the base bid, and that some, part of the city's contribution to the project is making sure that this is more than a building, that this is, as the mayor shared with us, a place where anyone can come and learn this history. And so it was very important to our Subcommittee that part of the city funding go towards the exhibitions. And so what you see here is that we have created this half-million-dollar allocation to cover exhibition elements. That could be anything from casing to purchasing projectors to just any of the elements needed that will be a part of the building that ensure that we can really get high-quality content in there, protect it, and tell the story of Oklahoma's civil rights history. And so again, we're looking at that 11.8 really being absorbed by the physical building itself, an additional half million to ensure we can do some really strong storytelling, and that bringing our overall, excuse me, base bid for the project just over 12 million. And so, and that's falling right in line with the cost estimates that the architects have been receiving. They're working with, I believe, Palacio is the name of the cost estimate, estimation firm, doing those cost estimates every point along the way. Also, you'll see here, there are a couple of alternates. We are looking at other options just to round out the project. We're hopeful to maybe be able to create a storm shelter. Obviously, that's a need here. Also, working with OG&E around power burial, burial of power lines and really communication lines as well. We're having to work with Cox and other service providers to handle that. So this is really just demonstrating that truly, this is base bid. And, you know, we as the operator are doing fundraising for other things, but it was important to the Subcommittee that we really have this storytelling included in the base bid. I believe that's the end. Happy to answer any questions.
Christina, thank you so much for the work that you've done. I know it has not been an easy journey, and with all the changes in construction and the challenges there, I know that doesn't make things easy. Would you mind sharing with the council? I know a lot of work has gone into with the board that you have. Would you mind walking us through a lot of the work around the fundraising and grant writing? There's been a lot of work that's been done, as well as the opportunity to activate this space for not just community, but for events and other things that may generate revenue to make this a more sustainable project?
Absolutely. So first and foremost, you know, the board's first priority was fundraising to restore the historic building. And that turned in, started out as we estimated about a half-million-dollar project, turned into about 650,000. That was all privately fundraised. We have wonderful relationships with our local foundations here in the city, as well as some corporate donors. And then I have been with the board for the last four years, almost four and a half now. And the truth of the matter is, we raise every dollar just to be there, right? We are an independent, non-for-profit organization. We are in the midst of negotiating our contract to be able to access some of the operations and maintenance endowments funds. But to date, all of our operations are privately funded. We have not received any funding yet from the city just to operate. And so we, again, really have made wonderful relationships and are expanding those in terms of local foundations, looking to national foundations, looking to, we've had wonderful relationship with entities such as the Historical Society and the Humanities Council supporting this work, and really working with fundraising consultants to just continue building that. Right now, we're really focusing on additional corporate and corporate entities, Paycom, banks, things like that. So I spend a lot of my time fundraising, is the answer. And once I raise a little bit more, I'll hire a development director who can focus on that full-time.
Thank you. This is an exciting addition to this community. I don't know, Joanna, if you go back like a couple of slides to the one where it shows the corner? And I think it just highlights the need for us to have another great attraction to this area that could be, could generate some economic activity, but also just be a really great place for us to honor this unique history in our community. So appreciate the work that's been done. Thanks for your presentation. Would you mind, I'm trying to understand also, I know in the bond, would you speak a little bit about the expansion?
Yes. So we have had to phase the project, as many of the MAPS projects obviously made many adjustments based on just the changes in the economy since those budgets were passed pre-pandemic. We have gone through an extensive planning process, working with Lord Cultural Resources, which is a global firm that specializes specifically in cultural institutions, museums, libraries, zoos, that type of thing. And initially, in going through our business planning, we had hoped to be able to create a 26,000-square-foot two-story facility. And that would have included all of the spaces that you see here, in addition to a 3,000-square-foot gallery and a 1,000-square-foot reading room and climate-controlled storage for our archive. So we have, we have been formalizing an archive of all of the historic materials that came out of the Freedom Center Building. We had to remove those before construction, have been working with university partners, the Oklahoma Historical Society and others. That is currently housed in a office facility on Northwest 63rd. And unfortunately, we'll have to remain there until we can get the appropriate storage on-site with the new facility. And so what we've done is looked at phasing the project so that we're able to get these initial spaces. Could you go back to the slide that shows? Oh, we don't have the one with the chart, but any of the, any of the floor plans is great. Yeah. So you'll see here, again, the event space, administrative, the widened gallery hall, the spaces we're doing double duty for storytelling, classrooms. Of course, with Clara Luper being first and foremost an educator, we wanted to make sure that we can start out with the educational programming, with being able to welcome the public into the space. That's been very important to my board from the beginning. And so these are the spaces that we prioritize for Phase 1, also prioritizing the opportunity to be able to generate revenue through rentals. However, we do still want to see that expansion, and so that is where the allocation for the GEO bond funding will go, should it be passed in October. So that will go to creating those additional spaces, which would come, can you go to the slide that shows outside? The floor, yes, perfect. So, no, no, no. Go right where you were. Perfect. So you'll see to my left here, the green, the grassy area just to the left of the building, that's where we anticipate being able to cite an expansion that would accommodate the exhibition, the archive storage, possibly if we need additional administrative space, you know, in the future. So that's, that's what we're hoping to do with the GEO bond.
Thank you.
Any other questions I can answer? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this. We do have one resident who's signed up to speak on this item, Michael Washington.
Thank you, thank you. You been listening to this foolishness? Have you been listening to this foolishness, I ask you? Here it is, this rank board gonna have the audacity to exclude me, who single-handedly? That's right, son, I got information I can show you by politics as well as newspaper clippings and so forth, that I, single-handedly alone, deserved the Freedom Center so that she can even be talking about it today. And yet this rank board that she spoke about, gonna have the audacity to not even mention my name? Would Clara Luper accept some foolishness like that? Hell, no, she wouldn't. You want to know why they don't want to mention me? Because they gonna know a lordy nobody like me had the courage, the inspiration, the manipulation, and the ability to say, hey, hold up, y'all, let's do something with this great historic property here, which had long since passed in 2017, when I had put it together and say, hey, y'all, I'm trying to look at this eyesore of a so-called historic facility, historic project. Oh, what are we gonna do about this building here? With all the different great things, the pageants and cookouts and things that's going along, and strategies that were planned for marches and things of this nature? I, by myself, as a matter of fact, you think I'm lying? Go to the Historic Preservation Commission. You heard me? Go to the Planning Commission. I, for nine months, by myself, was over there doing that. I, myself, introduced it to Katie Friddle. Ask her that if you want to. Me? You think I'm gonna lie to these people to stop here and talk about what we want to have? We gonna do this here with that? We gonna wipe out, beat Bob, Bob? Hell, no, you not. If I had to file a damn lawsuit to stop it all? That's right, you must determine how upset I am. I was waiting for this moment to come. I mean, every time a grand opening, whatever comes, you gonna recognize me that you wouldn't anybody else. I'm not gonna lie you to discriminate against me. These some of the things that Clara Luper talked against, and here it is, you practicing it? Hell, no, it ain't gonna work here today. I wouldn't do anybody else like that. I give you your accolades, your respect for what you did, they're not gonna take from you, because I don't like you. Don't make a difference on the damn whether I like you or not. If you give something, you gonna get it from me. That goes against what my mama got a problem with, and mom, sit down and listen to me now. Like I said, if it has to come from lawsuits being filed, you better believe it, it come. You got these so-called boards that don't even want to let you know when they're having board meetings. How in the hell they gonna show somebody respect then? That's right, because if you have your board meeting, I'm damn sure gonna speak, because I have the opportunity to do, and going to do it whenever the opportunity arises. Now then. That's right. Let me borrow you here just for another 20 seconds. Don't want to have good people board meetings when you gonna have it, huh? Got this so-called monies and things coming in, don't want to share with people, but other than people that you know or like on your board. Let me tell you something. Every one of you board, remember, if y'all listening to me, get ready, because there will be a party to you, you see, section 1983 lawsuit for slight disrespect, emotional stress, mental anguish and pain and suffering. Yes, y'all hear me? I know it. Check your laws. As I turn on the table, he knows about it. Check your laws as I turn on the, on the table, he knows about it. Yes, I can do it. You can't, and then we got our supporters, our people, we got our supporters, big-name philosopher corporations saying where they are buddies, don't mention nothing about empowering people.
Hi, Mr. Washington, we're over time.
Thank you, sir. Y'all have a great day, and like I said, this is not the end of this. I started to be so baby because my line is I'll be back.
All right. So we are on item I, and if there are no other questions or comments, we can move its adoption. We have a motion and a second. Passes seven to one. And now we are on 11J. This is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust certifying that Wild Rooster LLC's proposed feature film project was an eligible project under the Strategic Investment Program's Film Incentive Program. This allocation would not exceed $181,298. And we have Jill Simpson.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. I'm Jill Simpson, Executive Director of the Oklahoma City Film and Creative Industries Office. I'm bringing to you a rebate application, and I want to remind those that may be new, it's a performance-based incentive. So they've got to meet all the requirements of the program to get a dime back from our incentive. This is an independent feature, and it's a road movie in the vein of Rain Men. It takes place in all practical locations, no soundstage, and it tells the story of two brothers, one who goes to get his brother on the East Coast who's had a mental health issue, college professor at Harvard. This is based on a true story, and he's driving him back cross-country. They're planning to film October and November. They came in here and scouted in May and fell in love with it. They had never been to Oklahoma or Oklahoma City before. So the company is created just through this film, Wild Rooster LLC. They're going to have name cast attached. I can't name names yet, and honestly, I don't even know who they have confirmed yet, but they do, they will have names in the starring roles. 70% of the crew will be based in Oklahoma City or from our pool of Oklahoma City talent. They're anticipated to spend roughly 3.89 million or 60% of their budget in, with Oklahoma City's spend. That qualifies them at the 5% level. They have local qualifying expenditures, again taxable transactions of 3.880905 million. Their criteria that they met to qualify were at least $500,000 for the film. More than 50% of the crew are hired from the Metropolitan MSA, which is a seven counties surrounding Oklahoma City. More than 50% of the filming days will be in Oklahoma City proper. More than 50% of their contracts will be with Oklahoma City vendors, and the main production office will be located within Oklahoma City limits. And that will be determined, and I will work with them on identifying the spot. They're pre-qualified with the State of Oklahoma rebate program. So based on all this information and putting it through our Economic Impact Modeler, the, the dollar figure we came up with was $181,298 in rebate. They intend to hire roughly 35 people. The footprint of this film is smaller than usual. There will be 1,400 man days by the time they have filmed everything here. Again, 70% Oklahoma City residents. Qualifying income labor for the rebate is $2,639,027. Filming in Oklahoma City locations, 23 days, which constitutes 82% of their schedule. I still don't know about post-production. I'm hoping we can at least get some of the post-production work at Apex Post at Filmmaker's And these are just the bullet points again, 82% of film dates in Oklahoma City, 70% of the crew will be local, 90% of the vendors. And then some of the economic impact numbers after running it through our custom modeler, jobs supported direct and indirect, $8.8 million. 313 jobs, and that equals labor income of $4.3 million. Qualified expenditures, roughly $3.8 million. Taxable expenditures, $518,065. Below the line salary and per diem, $1,413,864. And I will tell you with above the line salary, they had 1.2 million. We reduced it to qualifying expenditures of $970,226 to keep it in line with our cap of 25% on above the line spend. Does anybody have any questions that I can answer? Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Jill. So we're on item J. If there's no questions or comments, we could take a motion for adoption. A motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay. Item K is enter into executive session on advice of the municipal counselor to receive confidential communications from our attorney regarding the case of City of OKC v. Betty Osborne, trustee et al. We could take the vote on the executive session, and then we'll handle it at the end of our other business. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item L1 is a claim recommended for denial. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11M1, our claim is recommended for approval. There are items A through E we could take with one motion. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, we're at item 12, comments from council. Word one, word two, word four, word five, word six, word seven.
Quickly. I want to say something really quickly. I, the Homeless Alliance is hosting a homecoming event that is a fundraiser for the Homeless Alliance. They've never done one before, and I have been invited to be a member of the Homecoming Court. So I'm strongly encouraging all of our council members to please consider coming. It's gonna be a fun party and activity. We all know how important the work that the Homeless Alliance is doing for our city is, so I'm encouraging you to come. So if you hear, if you see, see it on social media and you're like, no one invited me, Kamal did, just remember that. So, thank you.
Very good. Word eight.
Nothing today.
Okay. That brings us then to item 13, Citizens to Be Heard, and we have Ronnie Kirk.
My name is Ronnie Kirk. My address is 2328 North Missouri. You know, about three years ago, I also stood right here. When Mike Turpin had interviewed the young lady selling the Oklahoma marijuana license, she'd already sold 6,000. One-third of them were sold to people in other countries. We had so many, not even from Oklahoma, got those licenses. You know, two weeks ago, you seen this young man walking down the streets of New York, going up to this NFL building. He had an AR-15, walking down the street. And also, right here in this town here, we got this open gun carry law. I seen a man riding down a bicycle in Bricktown with an AR-15. You know, we gotta get these guns under control, get a repeal. Lincoln repealed two laws. Theodore Roosevelt repealed two. Oklahoma surely can repeal one to get these guns off the street. Here it is, you finna build the tallest building in the world. Do you think these shootings have stopped? Do you think these shootings have stopped? Kennedy, two days ago, you know, I also told y'all two years ago, three years ago, about these gummy bears in candy, THC levels so high. You know, we got these, trying to stop this drugs from coming across.
30 seconds remaining.
The borders. But hell, we got the drugs already in our city stores today, and these energy drinks y'all go buy. The drugs are coming through legally, through our big trucks. Don't worry about coming out of Mexico, they already in the stores here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Michael Washington?
Again, let me stay by concluding. Mr. Pennington, I'd like you to do some kind of resolution or whatever, thanking me for such a great thing that y'all just voted on. Watch it now. Thanking me. I've got information of the daily Oklahoma. Let me read this a little bit because my time is so limited. With just the stroke of a pen, activist Michael Washington claims to have taken control of the Freedom Center, Oklahoma City's only civil rights monument, memorial. But some in the community question Michael Washington's self-proclaimed role as savior of the historic building. The property at 2609 North Martin Luther King has been owned since 1969 by Non-Property Freedom Center Incorporated, founded by Oklahoma City civil rights activist Claire Luper. And I don't just wanna go read on and on, no, because y'all can go and read the daily Oklahoma yourselves, Mr. Pennington, of seven, word seven. Okay, and it's clearly states with the stroke of a pen, I preserved the freedoms, and I can't go into, cause I don't have time to really do what I wanna do, but I wanna get back on this foolish stuff here this lady spoke about. I need to be given and will be given my recognition, just as anyone else, and I'm sure that, I'll tell you, I'll jump over 10-story buildings and one, you can say that you wouldn't wanna be recognized for something great you did. That's gonna affect millions of lives from here to come in general situation. Now come on, I'm ready to do it to paramount it. Let's see if you hate Michael that much to lie and say you don't. Thank you now. Just like you and all, I'm gonna get mine. You don't, you wanna know why Michael Washington don't get his? Because he don't play by any means necessary, as all of us know. If you're done wrong, get ready, just like I do wrong, get me. I was taught and raised that way. I don't need no friends. Turn your head, Michael, cause I'm your friend, don't expose me. No, sir, I'm not, don't ask me to participate in crime, I wrongfulness, cause I don't do it. That's right. I don't do it. And I wanna be given my recognition. I want this board this year, city council, to give me my resolution as you would anybody else for saving such a great historic landmark the way I did for nine months by myself. Again, ask the Historic Preservation Commission, the Planning Commission, by myself, nine months, coming out daily, speaking and giving presentations on it. But they don't wanna know that, why? Because these so-called civil rights people, quote-unquote, here it is, you laid back and plan to give it away to make it become a parking lot or something, and I stopped it. Here it is, you, you all got civil rights struggle, naming all this, and then little old me, underdog, had to come in and do it by himself. Now you want recognition for bringing monies in, millions of dollars, but never got started after me? I'm sorry, sir, ma'am, it ain't gonna work. Again, I need to be given recognition, Mr. Pennington, word seven. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes Citizens to Be Heard. We're now gonna go into executive session, and we'll be back.
Thank you for everyone's listening. Have a wonderful. Have a wonderful day.